Okay, we're live and I'll call to order the common council of the city of Huntingburg. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Father God, thank you for those committed elected officials that are here today and we appreciate their service and as now we go in this meeting that you may guide them through their decisions, that their decisions may be for the benefit of all the citizens of Huntingburg. These things will ask your son's name.
Amen.
First thing, we want to motion approval of minutes.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Approval of claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Well, the first item up here is just the 2026 city budget meeting discussion. What we need to do that is set a date for that budget meeting. Obviously, we need to work through our court treasurer, so we're looking at dates between August 25th and August 28th. I think we'd originally talked about the 28th, if those don't work, then we have 2nd through the 5th of September. We're looking at a meeting really from 9:00 to 1:00, four-hour session.
It'll be longer than that. It'll be longer than that, I think.
What's that?
About 9:00 to 3:00, eh?
Well, we have two one-hour sessions or two four-hour?
No, you said two sessions, okay, nine.
Yeah, two sessions.
Yeah, nine and then one-on-one.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
That makes sense.
So it's doing the, all the sessions in one day or splitting them up? I don't care how we do it, but...
I like the agenda he has there. Like I mentioned, giving those three up top of the hour, because that was where we drug out last year.
Okay.
And if we have extra time, then Tom or you can fill it in with the small stuff. Then when we get to the afternoon, we should be able to get through that and catch up.
Yeah, I think last year we finished by about 12:15 with the morning session, if I remember correctly.
Is August 29th an option?
No.
No? September 1st?
No.
September 2nd.
September 5th?
How about August 25th?
No.
What's the 25th?
It's a Monday.
August 25th. I can't.
That's, no.
Well, are you going to be in the air or are you going to be where you can zoom?
No, I'll be airborne from 7:00 to 2:00 p.m.
About September 2nd.
Uh, I could do it till 3:00 o'clock.
Hopefully, we're done by then.
Okay, September 2nd.
What about the 3rd? Wednesday?
I can do that.
I have to see who's on, I got to see who's going to cruise this flight. I don't know yet. I'm undecided on the 3rd yet.
Should we...
I have another class.
Could we, could we say the 2nd as our primary choice and the 3rd as a second?
Second, I guess our primary. Can you repeat that?
You could probably make the motion to have a secondary meeting of, first meeting on the 2nd, if not the 3rd, depending on availability of all members, but I think we need to decide, need to decide very quickly by beginning next week, I believe, because for advertisement reasons.
Is September 5th out? Yes.
Yep. I'm all due for the 2nd or the 3rd, either one.
I can do both of those as well.
Yes.
That's right.
Okay, let's, I...
I can do the 2nd.
We had Board of Public Works and some other meetings that are on the force, so 2nd and 3rd are really the best choices.
Is it possible to zoom that, to participate that way?
Yeah, it has to be. I mean, it is a meeting of councils, a public meeting, it has to be available. Let me see though, I don't think, setting a budget, as long as it's not final adoption of a budget, I don't, I think you can't.
Because it's final adoption.
Final adoption, you cannot participate by...
That's a later, that's a later date, though, I think.
That has to be adopted by October.
No, these are just, these are just committee meetings considering budget planning. Yeah, that can be done by electronic participation.
That, that might be really helpful if we choose the September 2nd date.
I'm going to put that down.
Probably should have a motion on that. Yeah, were you going to do a first setting and then a second setting as an alternative?
Well, is it, I...
September 2 is the first setting.
So we can't do, is the week of the 8th too late? I mean, is that, is it better that we're all here in person?
Who's not here on the 2nd?
Me.
Sounds like Joe. Oh, okay.
What is too late? Because...
September 9th an option?
Well, that's to be adopted in...
That's a council meeting.
Right.
So I have to have the calendar with me, but that is far out. The 4th was the last day he gave me.
Yeah, when we get into...
Okay, Monday we'll come first.
It's Labor Day.
That's why, that's why you don't have anything to do that day.
There's not mark on here.
That's why you don't have anything to do that day. I could do the 2nd or the 3rd, it doesn't matter to me. Glenn's probably the same way.
We're thinking the 8th is too late in this year. Okay, let's do the 2nd then.
Yeah, it's going to get very tight to, for him to get back the numbers if we do it a week after then.
I'll make...
What about August 26th?
It doesn't matter to me.
I won't be available until a little bit later, like I, I won't be available until probably 10:15. Or 10:30.
You're going to miss sleep for it?
Well, I can see if I can, I have an appointment, but I can try to change it.
Tom and I have to pull out for about 15 minutes for a bid, bid opening for the water treatment plan on the 26th, but it's just a few...
Is that enough time to get it in the paper?
Should be.
I think it's... It's just an open door. No, it doesn't actually have to be advertised, you just have to give notice to media, to the special media.
Forty-eight hours, not including weekends.
Forty-eight hours, not including weekends or holidays.
Well, it's our general assumption, we're going to go back to August 26th.
I can try to change my appointment, I'll do that.
I can do that.
26th?
Yeah.
So we had motion put the 26th?
I'll make a motion to make the budget hearing, budget discussion on the 26th of August.
I'll second that.
The first and second, all those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Our motion carries, we had a meeting set.
And partially opposed.
We have next request, this is considered the ordinance submitting chapter 75 adding the parking restrictions of portions in certain designated streets. That's regarding Hunter's Crossing. We just took those streets in recently, it's time to put up the signs. The streets were actually designated by, and at one time by the Board of Public Works and as a recommendation to stay with that plan with the streets that are listed in the ordinance, ordinance signs there. We have reviewed that with both the police and the fire, and Chief Heim has even been down there in a fire truck through the area. People are beginning to park on the wrong side and both sides, so we wanted to get the ordinance in place very quickly before habits start forming and while you look at that, but it, it is consistent, I think, with everything we've done over the last five years at Hunter's Crossing, last four years anyway.
Has the, has the HOA there been consulted or has it been discussed?
We have not with them in the past. The ordinance, like I said, is consistent with the other streets. They don't, we haven't had anything official from them. One, one meeting they wanted, some people wanted parking on both sides of the street and another block they didn't want any parking. And a lot of it for various reasons I won't get into, but you know, I met with one lady that was on the board of the HOA and she wondered why there wasn't parking both sides of their streets. Well, she's talking, she said that street over there shouldn't be allowed to have any parking on it, so it becomes a personal opinion and I, you know, we have, I think the first thing, you know, originally that street wasn't designated to have parking on both sides and when the streets were, parking was added as an option, at that time it goes back even when Scott was chief and we, we took a lot of that from the chief, but also we have an SRO, that's also work with transportation with the school system, make sure we get buses through there, make the U-turn. So the cul-de-sacs, there is no parking, so they can properly make a turn in those cul-de-sacs. And that, that HOA wasn't happy about that either, so.
Well, I, I was here when they came to the council many years ago and asked for us to grant them a, I think it was called a variance fill, that, that instead of the normal width of a street, they wanted to narrow them. And at that time, it was presented to us that there would be no parking on the street, that everybody had two-car garage and there was parking in the driveway. And as it turns out, there were several residents, after we approved that to go with the narrower streets, there were several residents that claimed that they were never told that there would be no street parking and some people had five cars, six cars. And, and so it was brought back to us and it, it's kind of unrealistic to think that, that, that you can't park on the street ever because people have that many cars. They got young kids and...
Well, you're going to have parties, you're going to have people over to your house and if you only have, oh, those houses also don't have basements, so a lot of the residents utilize a garage like a basement, and so they're parking their cars. And then if you have any kids at all or any visitors, and it also stinks for the people who have, who their side of the street is no parking, because then they have to work on their neighbor's side of the street, which is a lose-lose for both the neighbor and, I mean, it...
But the whole subdivision wasn't designed for parking, unfortunately.
Yeah.
No.
So my, my comment is really, I think, yeah, we have to approve this, but in the future, I'll plant my flag right now and say that I would never approve those narrow streets again because of the problem that you talked about, that it puts now everybody on the block, both sides park on one side and those people are not happy about having trucks and cars sit in front of their house all the time. And, and so going forward, when we have an opportunity to consider that type of decision again, I think we should be mindful of how we did it, and I'm guilty as charged, but how we did it previously and really think that through before we...
Well, there's driveway restrictions too, so you can't make a lot of those driveways wider because of setbacks and some other, some other issues. And people don't use their garage for cars too much. I put one in my two-car garage. And I think most of you are probably that same way, so. Yeah, I, I would totally agree. I think, I think as of the Board of Public Works, when that first became an issue the first time, and I remember that, and...
Neither.
I, I will tell you this, with, with residents that I talked to last summer, I had two ladies on one street, we're talking about the parking, and one lady said it isn't fair that you put on one side and not the other. And I said, well, what's unfair about it? She goes, well, I don't see people parking in front of my house. And the other lady says, I don't want to have to park across the street. So, you know, it, it was, I said, so I just introduced themselves to each other and we went from there, but, so you do, you know, what's fair and what's unfair. It's a bad situation. I think this is the best solution. It's been beat to death, I think, and changed back and forth several times, but it does allow for, and really we're looking at bus paths or emergency vehicle paths of how they would get into there and move around, and that's really where the sides were determined was by, by that, not personal preferences of people living there, unfortunately, because they also would like to see a fire truck arrive if they have a fire too, so.
Well, then I think the conversation needs to come down for Hunter's Crossing Pass coming off of Progress Parkway right through here. I know this, I think there's signs on one, but there's nothing here yet, so I think we haven't done anything in here yet about parking on one side or the other. Yeah, I think that needs to be looked at.
Which street is it?
Coming right off Progress Way, coming down to Hunter's Crossing Pass, because that's where the, the main, one of two main ways to get in.
There are no signs there?
Uh, I was out there earlier, I don't know, was it six months ago?
No, no parking zone?
Yeah, because I don't think we even talked about that, that lane yet. We, we just accepted the...
I think you're right.
We got that far.
What's the name of the lane?
Hunter's Crossing Pass.
It's, 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 in the book, it's no, no, no parking.
On both sides?
I think on both sides.
Okay, that'd be great, because that's what I've talked to people before, because that's the main interest coming in there.
Yeah, it's no parking both sides. It should be, it should be posted.
And I think we did that intentionally for construction trips.
Right, right.
But you're saying that we should be, no parking both sides?
On that area right there, yep.
That's the only street that's no parking both sides in Hunter's Crossing.
I will need to go back and see if the signs are there. That was a while back, I mean...
Hunter's Crossing Pass from Steller Way to Progress Parkway, which is now Veterans Parkway, no parking anytime both sides.
Okay, good.
It should be posted too.
We'll take care of that if it's not posted.
I'll double check it, yeah.
Oh, I know they're parking, they're parking on the right side all the time.
And it needs to be posted if nothing else, but.
Now, my question is, do we want to consider that at some time? It's as wide, wider than the other streets? And we allow parking on one side on the other streets? That's probably what'll come up.
Well, I think we need to set some vehicles there and go out and sample with the fire truck and stuff coming off of that. Like I said, that's a, that's a main...
You have to have a long setback.
Main area coming out.
They probably have to pass that first driveway before you can start it.
As a residence that lives in a subdivision that doesn't allow parking on the street, I get it, but I mean, you know, that's sort of, we, we should...
What you bought in? I bought, that's why, I knew that, I bought in, you know, I knew that when I bought it, you know? And that's how it was set up.
My subdivision only park, only the section street I live, allow parking on one side and the rest of the subdivision doesn't.
We do have to allow...
They are wider. Mine's very wide.
Okay.
So we can go to a wide... You can, yeah, you need to introduce, number and introduce.
2025-17.
Seventeen. We have motion to introduce.
I'm making motion to introduce.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, 2025-17's been introduced. You can, if you choose, you can suspend the rules and consider the same, if meeting gets introduced.
I suggest we suspend the rules and introduce same night.
I'll second that.
We got a first and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor? Any opposed? We need a rule call. Now you need to, a motion to adopt.
We're going to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
I'll second.
Got a first and a second, all those in favor? Any against? Motion carries.
Kissling?
Aye.
Bowns?
Aye.
McBarren?
Aye.
Bulte?
Aye.
Ware?
Aye.
Bye-byes.
Thank you, guys. Well, coincidentally, I do want to introduce, as you know, a city has long been a financial supporter on the annual basis of DuBois Strong. We, I've asked Colton to do a quick run-through of exactly what we get for money, but what DuBois Strong is looking to in the future, and really I look at next year as a very strong year. A lot of things going on where some of that money's going to actually start getting invested in some strategic plans and some areas around childcare and all those things, if Colton wants to address those. Coincidentally, a reason I said coincidentally is because Colton is a recent new move-in to Hunter's Crossing. You've been there about three months now, I believe?
A little longer, but yeah.
A little longer, okay. So, what he is happy about...
It is on my side in the street and I would like, no.
Colton was talking about your utility.
Lose-lose, yes, utilities are phenomenal here.
You're with a competitor down south, so...
Yeah, no. Great community partners down south, like up here, but yeah, the rates are much better.
Good.
Yeah, yeah, recent resident, Hunter's Crossing, so proud citizen of Huntingburg now, but get to represent the whole county, so I appreciate Mayor letting me speak and I'll, I'll be as brief or as long-winded as you want me to be, but nice presentation, small screen, I didn't realize how sensitive the TVs were here, so next time we'll make sure to set that up. So I'll send this out to all of you after this, that way you have it, but we'll run through it a little bit. Really just kind of want to give an update on the framework and the mindset of where we're at and where we're going and then what we've been doing and kind of just showcasing some of that stuff. So economic development overall as a whole really centers around jobs to, the way we're looking at it, because jobs produce income that generates housing, that provides the market for retail, which creates taxes, fund education, that provide the workforce to fill those jobs, and it's this whole cyclical kind of trickle-down effect there. And that'll be kind of a recurring theme, because not every time we could do something that directly does a cause and effect and a direct impact, but we need to affect this cycle. So DuBois County as a whole, we, there's little check marks that pop up over those words there, so we have great jobs, we have great employers, we have good workforce partners. We outpace as a county on income across the state of Indiana, we're a little above the average income through the state. When we start thinking of ways we can affect positive change, housing is a big one for us, and we'll get into this a little bit later, but we know from our housing study, Huntingburg needs 480 new units of housing by 2035, and we're going to continuously start to update and report back on some of those numbers here in the near future, but we need to continue to make progress in that to give people housing options, to give them opportunities, to give them work job options to grow and prosper here. Retail follows rooftops, that's a big, easy one. There's a reason why the TJ Maxx and the Starbucks are on the north side of Jasper's, because all the housing is on the north side of Jasper. As we grow and expand, hopefully more retail grows and expands with us, that market kind of provides itself a little bit there. I will not get into taxes, I'll leave that up to you for taxing, and we have great education partners for school corporations, obviously Southridge High School doing great things here, great community partners with that, and that's really what drives our workforce to fill those jobs and get, kind of getting that cradle to career continuum. How do we showcase the opportunities we have here in the county? How do we showcase that to students? How can we tell them that you can make a great life, a great living here, fill those jobs and kind of complete that cycle? But we do this for, through four focus areas, hopefully these aren't new to you, but business retention, expansion and attraction, a fancy way of saying, go talk to businesses, see what's, see what's working well, see what we can improve, see how we can help support, but also attract and kind of create that competitive economy. Town attraction and retention, housing, childcare, the important key factors people look at for town attraction. Quality of place is kind of its own separate category. Market Street Park is a great example, Forest Street a great example. How do we provide those nine-to-five opportunity, or five-to-nine opportunities? Nine-to-five's important, but how do we provide that five-to-nine and fill that gap there? And then infrastructure enhancement, so we'll kind of touch on all of these too. But we do this through a four-P matrix, so when we have an option to affect real positive change, is it a program where it's long-term, sustainable, we run it out of our office? Is it a project where it's one and done? Do we do multiple projects that turn into a program? Is it a policy where we need to go either here, the state, the federal level and start to rewrite and change policies? Or is it partnerships where it's not ours to own, but we want to say yes and support that and be partners in there? So program, projects, policies and partnerships, and then I sneak a fifth in here, I should probably just add it to five P, but prioritization is huge. What's the most impactful, what should we focus on first? So kind of just a recap for 2025, specifically 26 business retention expansion visits. I, I don't have the number that I've done in Huntingburg, but met with Far Best just a few weeks ago, for example, where it's really a fancy way to say, I'm meeting with C-suite executives to figure out, right, what's going well, how can we affect change? What are your biggest struggles? How can we help? Kind of pick those pieces together on a local level, but also on a broader regional, statewide and national level, what are the key trends I do from my eight-to-five that maybe we can implement here? And from that, across the county, there's two expansion projects that resulted from those visits. One's in kind of a planning stage and one's actively looking to purchase land right now. So as we start to think about that, how do we grow and expand businesses, not only just our large businesses, businesses, but also how do we bring a supplier from a Ford F-150 to a box truck to a semi-truck, right? How do we move that progression forward? So really excited to see two projects come out of those visits. And then site selection is another big piece of what we do here, of how do we drive those businesses to the right areas with the right population, with the right people? There's two big ways that these come through to us. One is from the state of Indiana, essentially a company or a site selection consultant can go to the state and say, we need this much land or this many square feet, this much power, this much water, and we see if we can provide it. Those, we compete with 92 counties across the state of Indiana and however many counties and whatever other states they choose. Those are super competitive. The other side of this is there's been four prospective companies that have reached out directly to us that want to locate in our area, primarily final assembly and distribution centers. And then we're in the process of making marketing updates as we go through and start to try and sell this area. From a population and quality of life standpoint, we also have to sell the land that they sit on, the power availability and things like that. So this map is, I know it's really far away, but there's not a lot of detail, you probably know where it's at because you live here, but a site selector from Cleveland, Chicago, Austin, Texas, right, doesn't know what this is, doesn't know what they're looking at. When we get into something like this that pops a little bit more, we've identified a substation, water, gas, wastewater, hookups, major state roads, state highway, or federal highways, you can see a water tower, we've labeled who your neighbors are, so you can call that company and say, hey, how's DuBois Strong? How's the area? How's the workforce? And those things start to really matter and affect real change. Another big thing we did, this is a lot of data when you look at it, but...
I've seen on big screen, you can't read it there.
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's real small, but essentially we took, if you're familiar with NIS codes, they go from two digits to six digits, the more digits you add, the more specific you get. So, for example, 337 is furniture and related product manufacturing. If we were to add 337, one, it might be wood product. And then if we add another digit, it might be household wood product manufacturing, right? So they get more specific. We kept it at three digits to kind of get a broad base. So it's just some examples like food manufacturing, specialty trade contractors, wood product manufacturing, plastics and rubber products manufacturing, just to kind of give some examples of what those sizes are. Those industries that are above 400 employees, that's what's on this list here, and then we took annual payroll, job growth over the five years, the percent change, and then average weekly wages and something called location quotient, which is essentially a location quotient of one, or an LQ of one, is you could throw a dart at the map in the US and you're basically on par even with the rest of the US. But take furniture and related product manufacturing, we're 95 and a half times more specialized in our area than anywhere else in the US in that area. So the higher LQ you have, the more kind of specialized you are. What this really is, is the four key areas being the industries, their current employment as of 2022, which is the most recent data that the census has unless they've updated it recently, the five-year change in employment, and then the location quotient, we've taken that and put it into a matrix. So when I send this out again, right, you'll have four quadrants, mature, on the top left are companies that have figured out how to deliver their product at the best rates for them, at the highest profitability, probably a lot of automation, have been around for a while, really refine that process. The bottom left are companies in kind of lagging behind in terms of job growth and pay, average pay. Top right are our stars, so our companies that have high job growth and high specialization in our county. Furniture manufacturing is 95 and a half way up here, right, and had some job growth. And then the companies in the bottom right are emerging, so we're not fully specialized yet, but we've seen some job growth and we're starting to get close. So when we really do this, again, it'll make a lot more sense once you see it up close. We really focused in on a few different industries here, merchant wholesalers, durable goods, transportation equipment manufacturing, food manufacturing, specialty trade contractors and professional scientific technical services. So it really is just a fancy way to say, we're using a lot of data-driven processes to figure out what businesses we should go and attract and market ourselves to, what would help our industry clusters, what would help our industries here grow, what's complementary. As we get into talent attraction and retention, the big thing that happened a few years ago As we get into talent attraction and retention, the big thing that happened a few years ago was the DuBois County Housing Study. And I'm excited to say we've taken it off the shelf and I've read it and looked at it and are excited to start to implement some of those suggestions here. So as a county, find ways to share risk, increase variety of housing options, secure and conserve existing housing and leverage existing lots and add new lots. And one big suggestion was zoning for housing opportunity, specifically for Huntingburg's piece of it. And a Huntingburg strategy was review zoning codes. And we want to do this on a broader level. The objective was avoiding making viable housing non-conforming, which is a really fancy way to say, we have a lot of old lots when things were first plotted out where maybe it was a shotgun house. And now with our modern day setbacks and codes, we can't necessarily build on that. So now we just have an empty lot doing nothing but collecting very minimal taxes. So something that's really taken off here recently in partnership with ROI, a regional group we're part of out of Bloomington, incremental development, incremental codes. Essentially, it's a way to use those underutilized lots. So it's small-scale developments on those lots. It's less strain on public infrastructure because you don't have to run water, sewer, power out to a subdivision. Usually it's right there and hooked up and you can just tap into it. And it shares risk because the end goal is to have a set of pre-approved plans, maybe 30 to 50 pre-approved plans, that we would come here, get approved here. And then anybody in the community could go and say, I have a vacant lot and I want to build this house. They don't have the risk of architecture, engineering, they don't have all those big things. We'll of course sit down and work out drainage, but a lot of that risk is eliminated from the start and you don't have those upfront soft costs. And what this really looks like is if you look here, this gold house, maybe that's your house and you don't, you're tired of mowing that backyard, it's doing nothing for you. But our current zoning codes might not allow for two dwelling units behind you to achieve a current town. So you could take this pattern book and say, I want to build this. It's pre-approved, the plan works, our zoning code allows that there's space, there's things that fit and conform. And then you can go have more housing that's missing, that missing middle housing at a lower cost and it provides income for our residents here. So a little bit different spin on housing that I think we've previously seen. Moving into childcare, we're proud partners with the Community Foundation. They're guided by a strategic plan with their goals of supporting the early childhood education workforce, strengthening community awareness and collaboration, improving quality and increasing capacity. This is, I believe, we're up to nine members coalition that's really just trying to drive childcare forward and do more actionable results from it. And we're proud to be strong supporters with that, actually. Recently, $30,000 in grants, somewhat recently, $10,000 with the South Ridge Little Raiders to expand some of their classroom materials and offerings. And then as part of a greater regional approach to it, there'll be a smart start coordinator that will service childcare needs and meetings and drive that forward for DuBois County, Orange and Crawford County. So they kind of broke into separate regions, again, through a partnership with ROI out of Bloomington. And then you might recall, a few years back, we did a talent attraction with Radius Indiana, a regional partner out of Bedford, to attract and give a stipend with Make My Move remote workers, but also with our employers. So I just want to get a quick update on that. Thirty-six total movers since the summer of 2021 when this program started. And there's two ways that people come to be movers. The first, we had 18 join the workforce here. So that's current employers in our county paying a percentage of this $5,000 stipend and then Radius covering the other percentage of it. The employee gets it, they work and live here with a two-year commitment and some other perks and benefits. And then we had 18 come through the remote work program, which is you have a remote job, you retain that remote job, but move here. So your income, your discretionary spending, ideally it's somebody from California, New York, high cost of living, where their salary is a lot higher and their dollar goes a lot further here. But what that really resulted in was 100 total new residents, when you start adding their spouses and children and others that move along with them.
And Radius was nice enough last year and I believe this year too, to bring those residents on a evening to the DuBois County Bombers Game. They bring them to, into the communities, other communities, introduce them to the restaurants and businesses in that area. So it's, it's, they're very active and run a great program.
Yeah. At a minimum, they do a quarterly event. So somebody might move and choose to live in Orange County, but they'll do the quarterly event at the Bombers Game and different things like that. So really kind of try to integrate them into the greater region as well. But the economic impact of those 100 new residents, 36 movers, total new annual economic impact, $2,345,536 annually. That's things like City of Jasper food and beverage tax, that's property taxes, that's wheel tax, that's car registration, 7% sales tax at the Walmart, right? All these things start to add up. For state and local annual new state and local taxes, about $280,000, a little over that, from those residents that move here. But it also generated 13.7 jobs just by a metric they use because people need baristas, people need, you know, people to teach their children, things like that. And the average income of those 36 movers when they sign their contract, so this might have been somebody in 2021, but the average income is $94,291 of those 36 movers. So hopefully they're doing well and excelling in their jobs and getting their raises. But that's about where we're at with that program. So really successful program and we're looking to continue that partnership as well with I'll go a little quicker here. Quality of place, there was a 2019 Quality of Life and Workforce Attraction Plan, gave us a big metric to, matrix to go through and prioritize them. There's talks of updating this and last time when there was an update, there was funding that followed it. So we started to go through and say, okay, what's been done? What can we prioritize? What might be most important? And start to do some of those, like Market Street Parks on here is one example. We can cross that off, but what's the next step to that? And then as we get into infrastructure, obviously Ben State's Quarter is probably the largest economic development project that the county's seen in quite some time. And also for us, and one of the project goals, secondary is support economic development in Southern Indiana. There's a meeting Thursday afternoon in City of Jasper. They have a Zoom link, I'd highly encourage you to join that, at least join a Zoom link there. So I won't touch too much on it. And I know I spoke with you all, median household income in cities with similar roadways, all trending upwards, poverty status trending down for those communities and then unemployment rates are trending down in those communities that have a similar roadway type, Kokomo, Dale and Martinsville. And really the end goal, right, is it's hard to project out exactly what it'll do. So I just pulled two examples of Martinsville, starting to see housing development around I-69. I've talked to the Economic Development Corporation in Morgan County. They've had great things to say about it, a lot of housing, a lot of parks coming on along with that. And then up in Kokomo, Stellantis or Chrysler keeps their manufacturing base pretty strong up there as well because of the logistical advantages and other factors up there as well. So we can sit here and debate a lot of those factors, but we hope that economic development comes along afterwards and that's really the big key goal there. As companies continue to find efficiencies in their processes, those efficiencies will be implemented regardless of our community feelings. And we have to make sure that we give those community feelings and opportunities relevant because our companies here are operating on a global scale and we have to make sure we give them global opportunities here. So that's DuBois Strong as an overview. I put a kind of a little budget here on what we go through. A lot of it's just personnel costs just to exist, truthfully. And then we have lease professional costs, things like that, but just be a little more transparent, I think, what you've seen. Requesting the same amount as we've had since 2005, so no increase to it. I don't, it's a hot number, I don't recall off the top of my head. I cheated, it's in the notes in here, but happy to answer any questions through that.
One thing I'd like to say with, with Colton, when we, prior to bringing Colton on last year, I was on the board, did that interview process and brought that forward. We saw a lot of projects with DuBois Strong was claiming credit for that really, we did a housing study. Well, no, they didn't do a housing study. You know, somebody else did it, but we signed off on it. But really put legs to the, the things that are there, some of those things, you know, Colton's looking at now is our, our zoning and policies regarding home construction, how, what are the best practices in the county? How can we all learn from each other's best practices? Taking the metrics of the housing study, putting it forward, putting somebody on the childcare committee and actually working together too on, when we talk about development and training of the workforce, there'll be somebody in your office here pretty soon that you'll work side by side with, that'll help with a lot of the industry and overseeing further development of workers there. So there's a lot of things I think actively they're doing. It's not putting together a study or a program and putting it on a shelf, but taking off what's already there on the shelf and put it, put it back to work. Colton's done a great job of that, that's all I'll say here. He's very in tune to the employer needs. And if you, Tim might've seen it, but the building out that's been vacant for quite some time, you know, Colton's got involved with the, the new owners there, been in communication. If you've not been there, building's been painted, it looks great. They're cleaning up the area off of West First Street, just around the corner from, from you, off Sycamore, back behind you, you a little bit, but-
Factory behind me.
Oh. Same with this, oh, gotcha.
It's kind of been an ugly building for a number of years. It really, by their day, looks charming.
Yeah, yeah, they, you know, those are little things that matter to the community, don't matter to the price per square foot, honestly. Maybe a dollar more, but that's not changing any performance for anybody. So we're excited to be able to work with that group and kind of drive some of that forward. Obviously, they want to market it, make it look nice, but you can go to the inside and look the outside however you want. So we're excited to see some of that. And I appreciate that, Mary, because a, a lot of it, been here almost a year now and a lot of it's been positioning of DuBois Strong, where do we affect real change? How do we do it? What's the metric? What's the framework? Where can we pick up on those pieces and really move forward and what do we own? So we're excited to start with housing and do those pieces, but also, you know, following up with the next project for town attraction and marketing and how do we really start to drive business growth, but also population growth and bigger things as well.
Do you know what our unemployment rate is right now?
2.3% for the county. It's about 750 people, I think, over the age of 16.
How do you come up with the 480 by 2025 or 35?
That's based on the housing study. I always laugh and chuckle and say it's before Colton, so it's VC, but a lot of times those housing studies are just based on projected population growth through just various models.
Yeah, they, they met with six different groups. They looked at not-for-profits, small business, large business, realtors, employees. So maybe employee at OFS or Farbest said, I live outside the county, but if they had this type of housing available, I would move here. It's also based on job growth of what price of the income of those people that, for those 800 some open positions in the county right now, what those positions would pay, what type of house that person would be looking at? Are they looking at starter home? What are the age groups? So there were surveys given out to the employers and employees as well as realtors, builders and everything else that came up with that market value. I think there were 140 of those were considered mid-level rentals, apartments, which in a popular ridge would be about 126 of that, 140 some. There's, I think, 45 that they're in the 400 to 800,000 range and everything else falls in between.
Yeah. The, the housing study, which I can, I can send you like the specific section, will kind of break out the average income bands and then how many houses, if we're at a deficit or a surplus and what we need. Because what we'll see a lot of times is just a lot of housing constraints and upward and downward pressure because if I make $30,000, I'm going to be in this house price point because of the mortgage underwriter, but hopefully maybe I upgrade and get promoted and I have a $50,000 job. I might qualify for a house payment higher, but I'm staying in that house now because there's no options available. Same likewise, if somebody makes a million dollars a year, they might buy a $250,000 house, which takes away quote unquote, that from somebody making, you know, $50,000 a year that might qualify. Don't quote me on those numbers, but we get that upward and downward pressure, it really just compresses the market. But there's, as a county, there's 6,000 people that file taxes outside of this county, but their employers in this county. So as we start pulling metrics like that and start thinking employment growth, those people might look to move here and work here instead of going somewhere that maybe they've historically lived or a lower cost of living or families close by, whatever it is, a lot of factors, but-
It's a large file, but you can find it online to look at, but one of those, I, I, we can't email it, it's that large, so you have to put it in Dropbox or something. But one of the thing, factors that is looking at and we've looked at, kind of keen on are what housing do we have that's subpar that needs to go away and be replaced with new? So that's in that 400. That's also replacement of existing housing.
And some of that zoning code too will help with some enforcement and code violations, things like that can help to a certain degree to kind of move that needle in the right direction of, you know, it might not just be a piece of land that you tired of mowing and would rather build a house on it and create income. It could be, you know, a regional land bank play is something we're looking at with some of our partners in the north have a regional land bank. Maybe we join that where they can acquire the property, build a house, keep costs low, minimize risk, develop it and go. So I've touched, scraping the surface here, so again, happy to answer all the questions or meet afterwards too, but a lot of, a lot of variables with it all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. Thank you. City Attorney-
I have nothing.
Schneider, clerk treasure, Amy?
No.
Nope, nothing there. Any citizens or council items today?
I have one. I drove up Walnut Street wall ago. It's being paid, it's looking really good. It's not done yet, but it's coming along really nice.
All the question, I was there waiting for about two hours for the asphalt to arrive this morning, so.
They're out there yet, but it's-
I think there's about three or four places in town that were, in the next couple of weeks should be tuned up, tuned back up and opened up where they're paved again.
Yeah, you'll see grinding done over on Jackson and finish dispatching, re-depatching some Second Street, some of the others. So they'll be out moving around here at everywhere. Clay Street is probably the furthest behind, I saw this morning, the deep patching where the lines were replaced, still need to be completed. They're working on that though, they're, they'll continue working on that till we get it finished.
Any update on First Street?
Notice, notice the acceptance of award was signed today. So our 20th is our construction, pre-construction meeting, it's 20th. Actually, clock started as soon as I signed it today, so it'll move forward. They've already done mailing, the previous contractor has done the saw cutting and gotten it prepared, so it should go pretty quickly once, once they move in. There were some things that were still under the old contract they had finished, that's done now.
Good.
It's probably the priority for most people in town.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we'll move that. School started. We, we're trying to put some safety stuff out there, the police as well as ours, but it's also signed that we have Malia back in our meetings now, as far as Mayor's Youth Council. I don't know if you have any input or anything you want to say today?
Not much. We will have our club there the 22nd of this month, so then we'll start right after that.
22nd? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What was it, on the 22nd?
Our club there. So then right after that, our club will start.
Okay. What time is that club fair?
It should be like 10:40 to like 11:00.
For the job fair?
Yeah.
That's inside of the cafeteria area?
I haven't heard yet. Either the gym or the cafeteria.
Okay. I meant, I'll try to be there. I was there last year and I didn't have it on my calendar for the show. I sent you an email today, so. All right, anything else?
Can we, can Tom get us the budget proposals as soon as possible?
We were still needing four more, which I got the last one, I think, this morning. So once he gets back, he'll start plugging those numbers in.
Okay, be nice to have those rather than the day before, if you could.
Thank you.
Yeah, look at it, look at it.
Other than that?
You want to print it off? You want to print, we'll get it printed out?
Can, yeah. Yes?
Citizen item?
I'm just going to make most of the journal, get things-
I'm going to continue to come before you all until we get this problem solved recording. Right now, we haven't really seen very much progress, even though at this point it's supposed to be having daily clients. And so we've seen very little movement and more so not in the areas where it needs to be. So not addressing actually where the offense is.
I will say, we've had some progress in some other areas, but not in your neighborhood. But that is best I can, best way to put it right now is being escalated as per, per our ordinance, so.
Well, I just, I mean, this is a 13-year problem. And when I thought that was going to be resolved, I backed away and didn't say anything. Now I'm learning that I need to make sure of the present system to make sure that it continues to move forward and that it gets fixed. One of the other areas too is when, I guess, when is it where we just start addressing other areas? Like we have a property across the street that is, no one's living in and it's in disrepair and probably needs to be put on the list also, the people don't live around here. But maybe, you know, we're talking about housing too, how many houses do we have here that are abandoned houses that really need to be torn down or addressed to bring back up to code so someone, they can sell it, move into it? So that's my, my next area is that, you know, looking at other properties too, like a shed that is in total disrepair that's falling over, that needs to be taken down for safety concerns, that we really need to start, keep moving forward. And as we're seeing the progress, I've been very happy because I also see the county's addressing it also. So I think we backed off in our community too much. Now we need to really move forward and make our community even better. So I will continue coming to the meetings until we get progress, until I can see some major changes. So, I will continue coming to the meetings until we get progress, until I can see some major changes happen.
Yeah, we've, we've been traveling extensively, I say we, and then that's, uh, Chief Heim and Mr. Lake and myself, looking at, actually walking through, through, talking to neighbors, uh, finding out what properties are vacant. We, you know, I believe, I believe personally, we need a registration system, but not, but also how those, those vacant properties should be treated. One of those are those that we have people that from out of state or out of county that owns those, they need to have a local presence, uh, and that local presence. And my, my thoughts is that if they can't inspect that property on a weekly basis, they need to let it go to somebody that can, uh, but they need to move forward. So, there's, uh, we're looking at several options, some stuff we'll, we'll have to run by Phil here pretty soon, but I think we have some other stuff to run by him. But we'll say that there are some homes, there have been a couple of businesses, um, that we have taken some action on. We had a lot of dumpsters on the southeast, southwest, southeast corner of the city, uh, a few months ago, uh, being loaded up with some hoarding there. Took about five dumpsters out of one house, um, it was a mess, so, uh, we are escalating the situation that you're referring to next to you and taking further action there. And it, it, it's not been promising on our end. I will say that, uh, Chief Heim and, and Mr. Lake have been on the property, have been taking pictures several times, offering other assistance and it's not been, we haven't had the progress that we need to. So, we need, we're taking, we've taken it to the next level now.
And I would, you know, uh, as a neighbor, it is hard on our side because, and that's where we really rely upon you as our representatives, to really push it forward. Because it becomes very contentious when you're living beside someone, like there is no speaking terms and there's just bad communication. It should never have gotten to that point where it was up to us, it should really be enough on our city to be able to enforce those codes to make sure. So, we really do rely upon you because as neighbors, we want to be able to be good neighbors and have good communication without being the one who says this is not okay. So, thank you.
If I can, if I can ask, what does, what does it mean that we're taking it to the next level? I mean, when can we expect the fine?
I'll refer to our attorney on that one for the proper wording.
About a little bit more than a month ago, notice the violation was sent and presented to the ordinance, uh, to the particular property you're referring about to. They're given thirty days to come bring the property in compliance, they didn't bring it into compliance within the thirty days. And last week, they were issued a citation for ordinance violation and a fifty-dollar, uh, fine. And notice that each additional day that it continues, there'll be a hundred dollar fine. I wrote the property owners a letter and gave them to the nineteenth to give me a timetable for coming into compliance. They've got specific instructions as to what they have to do to come into compliance, uh, within fourteen days and that fourteen days will be up, uh, on the nineteenth. I've drafted a complaint to file in court for, um, injunctive relief, permanent injunction and for recovery of fines for a hundred dollars a day. So, that, that will be the next step, suit will be filed if there's not compliance by the nineteenth.
Is that on one, the one property?
The, the one property, yeah. That's the only enforcement, uh, that's the only notice of violation I've gotten to, to proceed with.
The other two properties in question are, are ready to move on to, we've given them an opportunity on this one. Some just here. Time because they have three properties and so we, we will move simultaneously on the others now since they did follow through on the first.
Wow, that's good, I'm just curious, is that as, those actions, is that as aggressive as the law allows?
In my view, yes, it is, yeah.
Okay.
Does it ever come to a point where the city takes it and takes, cleans it up themselves? Is that allowed to be done?
You can, but then you risk the, you risk the, uh, the, uh, problem with, uh, with, uh, taking property without just compensation, you know? What appears to be junk or trash to us may not be to them.
Okay.
And, uh, we don't want to make, we don't want to make those calls, we want the, uh, landlord to make that call and to plant the property, bring it into compliance. We've got the specific instructions as to how they can bring it into compliance, uh, it's very detailed, uh, and they've, they've got all that information.
Okay.
Uh, as to what is expected. But, uh, they have not complied to this point and we will push it, uh, with the next step is a suit, a lawsuit in Circuit Court. And complaints are even drafted.
What is that?
And then what happens after the lawsuit?
Well, then they'll be forced to appear to hearing, uh, to, uh, to determine whether or not they're in violation. And, uh, if they're in violation, we'll ask the, the judge to enforce the hundred dollar day penalty and your judgment against the offending party. And it will also ask the court for an injunctive order, an order directing them to bring the property in compliance with, pursuant to our instructions. And if they don't, then they're in contempt of court and they'll suffer not only our fines, but they'll suffer fines, civil fines by the court for being in contempt and possibly imprisonment, uh, for, for direct contempt of a court order.
And then if they don't pay those fines, we'll eventually have a lien.
Judgment, it'd be a judgment lien against the prop, against the owners and their property, uh, which we could foreclose.
Is there, there was a limit, did we have a limit on that?
It is, I think the state law is seventy-five hundred dollars.
So, what happens if they pay the seventy-five hundred and they're still not complying?
Courts can go above that.
The courts, yeah, the court can go above that, they can find civil fines for contempt of court, uh, unlimited dollars. I should, I should say unlimited, but, but, uh, much more than we can, yeah.
What is, what is, sorry, what is the situation on the, uh, the weed liens, things like that? Once they're cleaned up, how often do, is that cycle start over?
What's that?
We got a property where the, they, it's not mowed and then the city has mowed the property and then what is the cycle for that? The city mows the property and then thirty days later before we mow it again, or how does that work?
I'm not sure how, what the, what the cycle is, but once the city mows the property, court treasures office sends an invoice, uh, for the cost of going. Plus, plus a fifty-dollar administrative fee, it's not paid within thirty, what is it, thirty days, thirty days? Then, uh, I'm given notice that it hasn't been paid and I prepare a lien, a weed lien, uh, that is recorded at the auditor's office at the courthouse. It then becomes a special assessment against the property and it's added to their property taxes. The property is then, uh, you know, if taxes aren't paid, it's, it goes up for tax sale. So, the property on Washington Street is up for tax sale this, this fall, I believe.
Okay.
September, I believe.
And realize that probably whoever purchases it, it'll be eleven months before they do anything.
Yeah, what, what typically.
But it's not mowed now.
Yeah, what happens a lot of times, or what we may see is that property is so heavily leaned with our liens because we have not, we have a demolition lien on it. We also have, we also have the weed liens on it, uh, nobody will bid on it.
Exceeds the value of the property.
Nobody will bid on it and it becomes, uh, a commissioner's, uh, a commissioner's, they call it commissioner's deed, I think, or certificate. And the commissioner, county commissioners can offer it to the municipality on whatever terms we can come to agreement on. The last time where that happened, they offered to us for free and we took the property, cleaned it up and, uh, and then sold it to Habitat for Humanity.
There is a provision now with land banks, you can do regional land banks now and that's what we, we have had discussion in. Because the land bank basically, if the county agrees to it, uh, county, uh, county elected officials at all would have voted and agreed to be a member of that. That land bank could become owners of that property and market it, uh, too, so there's, that law changed just a few years ago, that's why Martin County got involved in it. At the time, DuBois County had no interest in being involved, so it didn't happen in DuBois.
I have a question.
Although I'm kind of pushing for it, so if you have.
Yeah, I've had some conversations about it.
Phil, if, okay, we've given tax abatements for some of these corporates and big apartments, can we write a tax abatement for a single-family dwelling to tear down, to tear down a house?
Yeah, that, you, you, you can only, for residential abatement, there's limits on what you can do and it has to be, uh, it has to be for developments that, uh, predominantly for a load of moderate income housing. I mean, but it can't, it has to be for more than just one house, it has to be a development.
So, that, that's not going to solve our problem of one property that's been neglected today, somebody tears that down and builds another property to get an abatement on it.
I, yeah, I don't think it can work that way, Glenn.
Good. Back to something Colton said earlier about identifying these properties and making it easy for a person to buy the property and build a pre-approved, um, house plan on it. That, that's an intriguing idea, that's something I think we need to spend more time talking about.
Let, let me hit that all right up here, uh, like the mayor said, the land bank can acquire it through various processes and then, you know, there's, there's funds available, tear it down. And then I think they're selling properties up, um, Washington, Martin County right now for seventy-five hundred dollars for the property. And then they can go put a pre-approved lot on it, pre-approved land, you don't have all that engineering design fees that are tacked on to it, so hopefully that house price point can go down. Partner with nonprofits, maybe it's, uh, an arm of DuBois Strong at one point where we build houses, right? There's a lot of options to go there, um, or maybe the land bank builds a house and sells it, it's a lot of options, a lot of, that could drive housing costs down.
There's a local community outside of our county that during two thousand ten, eleven acquired about thirty-five properties that were vacant for some time. And they're filling those through private, uh, not-for-profit, I know Trekkets doing some, uh, Kirstens have done some. And they have set plans that they're putting on their, their lots throughout that community.
They've already been approved to fit the set by action.
Yeah, the sidewalks are there and everything's there, they're just popping them on there, so.
And this would encourage local.
Uh, Boonville did it several years ago too, about two thousand fifteen like that.
And it would encourage somebody that might want to pay all the liens and fines that's local to acquire it, not have it and then sell it or rent it and they're local and things like that too, so. Whereas much as, sorry, government and government-adjacent entities don't have to be involved if a private citizen can buy it and build it and we can make that process easy. That's been a pretty proven model for a lot of other areas too.
Yeah, they're, and they're doing, some of those are HUD-funded properties where they'll take a market, two hundred thousand dollars house, sell for a hundred and fifty. HUD covers the fifty grand for them, then one fifty they reinvest in the next house and till they, just keep doing that till they run out of money, uh, is another way. It's called the home program, but it's, it allows you to build some houses that are two to, to two hundred thousand, that range, which is a basic house now.
Yeah. Thank you, is there a way we can take that fancy new software that we have for code enforcement department and click a button or something and increase the amount of information that we're allowed to see when it gets posted to the Board of Public Works meetings? Because it's, for, for our view, the new software, this, a lot, we're paying a lot more money for, is not better. What we can see is way worse than what we used to be able to see. And it really kind of cuts us out of that whole process, unlike where it was just before that new software came out, but.
I know I said I'd look at that last month, I'll definitely look at it. We, we are getting a lot more, the thing that it doesn't tell, uh, sometimes progress and that has been an issue in the past where we say, uh, you know, we send a notice to this house and for fourteen days, we got a council member calling, what did you do today? What'd you do today, which we spent so much time answering emails and that, that we did, we didn't do anything today because we were answering your, your, your request. So, we got to be a little bit careful, we had seventy notices sent out last month, what I like to see is that the percent of weeds was actually down, that's percent of calls. It wasn't like it was fifty weed notices and twenty junky homes, it was, I think there were around twenty-two, twenty-three weed notices out of seventy, uh, high grass notices and, uh, you know, we've had some. We're, we're having more conversations with groups and engaging them more than just sending a letter. I've talked to some owners too and we've called some people, I'm not mentioning businesses by names, but, uh, there's been more, uh, you know, uh, I know Chief Heim down on those two where they had the dumpsters, he was there observing them, taking stuff out, what are you taking, doing? Giving them very good direction on what they should remove from there, uh, same thing with your, with your area, it's a very detailed letter. So, four, about four pages long, I think, or more, uh, specific thing, so he's been very good about that. He takes it serious because he doesn't want to send firefighters onto these properties. And, you know, that's where, uh, I think he's been very detailed with everything and I've been very happy with a lot of the results. But he also looks for resources when people need it, their senior or somebody doesn't have resources. And, uh, when he had his, um, Catholic group that was here last month, he sent them out and they went to a lot of these homes and helped, uh, people take care of issues. And some of them didn't want it and some did, so.
He actually takes pictures and gives written information in there, so there's two different ways to look at it, so very, and he does a really good job with his report.
It's, uh, it's pretty detailed, it's pretty detailed. And it just seems like, uh, you know, you need, need to come up with another one, uh, and really, uh, it comes down to bad landlords. I agree, and we, we need to, in my opinion, make it harder for the bad landlords to survive and make it easier for the good landlords to prosper. You know, through our own procedures and, uh, that we have to do, but, uh, some of that, hopefully it'll be something in the future we can talk about there too. I do want a rental registration policy and, and certain standards that renters have to maintain.
I support that a hundred percent.
Me too.
I think that's well past to overdue.
Bye.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do it.
I mean, I, I think that we need to get that enough to be on the agenda for the next meeting, to have something that we're seriously, there's too many landlords that are taking advantage of individuals and.
I think the first thing.
They're just letting the property.
We need to look at is, uh, the, the abandoned vacant property first because, uh, as these, as we go to come down the land boards, there's going to be more and more vacant and abandoned property. So, we need to put that in place as the first step and the second step, we need to move back into the, the registration process. It's, it's pretty involved, um, statutes limit us somewhat with that. Some, some landlords are exempt from that registration process by state statute.
I think it's something that we definitely need to at least look into because we've been talking about it for a really long time and it's just gotten pushed along. I think that it's, that's something where there's a lot of.
Yeah, there's, there's a progress to it, I mean, there's, there's hoarding ordinance, if you look at the letter, letters and the details there is very time-consuming. Frankly, becomes a learning curve for, for our enforcers as well as, you know, uh, getting feedback from Phil, make sure we're doing everything right. Uh, we can't go out and do fifteen properties at one time, it's just, it, it, it doesn't work, it doesn't work. So, let's, once we get the system together and we start moving it in and we start in, you know, doing some fines and moving them to the next level, I think we'll see, hopefully, we'll scare some people away and, uh, that's where we're at.
Step up and fix it, yeah.
Well, I think that's part of it is that we have to get something going because if you're allowed, if it's allowed to happen, it will continue to happen.
First step was the, was, was take, take, go through all the procedures on the, on the hoarding ordinance, second one is the, the vacant and abandoned building, building, uh, area. I think we're about ninety percent, well, we're probably ninety-eight percent ready to send that off to Phil for review. And we've been working on that over the last month now and we want to get the hoarding ordinance again, the next step is that, uh, we'll work on another registration. And we do have a registration, uh, we discussed for Airbnbs and other things too, requirements, asking them for a lot more information than we know, than we, we don't ask for anything right now. But that the, uh, landlords', uh, information on phone numbers posted out front, that there's, it's named, that they have liability insurance that occurred on their taxes, um, all these things. So, if you're going to be registered, and it doesn't matter if you're short-term or long-term rental, that these would be things that everybody has to have. We don't know if there's liability insurance, we know if they paid their taxes or not, but that's about it. And if not, you know, the, then it becomes an abandoned property and then you can move on from there. So, there's, there's kind of a progression, a progression, uh, to make things happen and I think those, combined, those three ordinances, the one we've, we've already passed. And the next two will take care of probably ninety percent of it, you'll still have bad actors, but I, I want to make it difficult for the bad actors to survive.
Do we have a goal as to when we want that done, like by the end of the year, can we have something?
Well, we're going to present something to Phil next week to approve.
But as far as like the landlords and different things with that, I mean, I.
Yeah.
This is something that I feel really strongly about, so I, I feel like that if we have a timeline, then that kind of helps us to push things along a little bit faster, but I would like to.
We made progress on it every week, let's just put it that way, but I, I do believe, um, I'll leave the timeline to Phil. We make progress on it every week, let's spin it that way. But I, I do believe, um, I'll leave the timeline to Phil because it'll be up to him to review, but we'll have something to present on the, on the vacant and abandoned property by next week, so.
Continue it. Okay. Well, I know.
Part of, part of the reason is too, with these, these, these ordinances, other cities have done it with mixed results. Uh, so we're also, we've also reached out, what has worked, what hasn't worked, what do you suggest, even in your own ordinances that did work? You know, we, we had one we thought we liked. We found out there, there's a lot of things wrong with it and we started over, um, with one. And I pulled from a southern Indiana community that had very good luck with it. I talked to their, uh, called their planning director today and their mayor to ask for some feedback on what they would change on the plan and what they would suggest is improvements, what worked, what didn't work for you. And I've been to the community and I've seen what has worked, but I want to know what didn't work and if we can make changes there.
What's enforceable, what's not enforceable, what's, yeah.
So it's a, it's a priority. It's above, uh, it's above a lot of things. I've got about fifteen priorities right now. Getting streets paved and, and planning for next year's streets and the budgets and everything else. Uh, yeah. Arcs plan, arcs improvement plans, uh, getting aggressive there. So hopefully you'll hear about some of that in budget hearing and got a lot of projects going. Fricking with some people that may want to invest in Honeyberg and move here and from business hotels, those type of things too. Those conversations are going on right now too, kind of simultaneously with, with enforcement. Some days I don't even know where I'm at, so I'll try and move forward.
All right. Anything else?
You may.
I know you're in a hurry here.
I'm not in a hurry. I'm just.
Motion adjourned. Have we have a second? All those favoring? Do you oppose?
We're considering talking.
All right, we're at six forty-two. We're calling it.
I think that makes sense.